Okay, we are recording.
Okay. I call this city council workshop meeting to order on December 8th, 2020 at 7:31. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the city clerk, please read the open public meetings act.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings law. Notice of this meeting was included in a notice sent to the record and the star ledger and advertised in said newspapers on January 17th, 2020, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. A copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Please take, please take notice that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera, and Local Finance Notice 2020-21, New Emergency Regulations Remote Public Meetings Held During a Declared Emergency Issued by the Local Finance Board on September 24th, 2020, and NJAC 5:39-1, Emergency Remote Meeting Protocol for Local Public Bodies Establishing Standard Protocols. The City Council of the City of Englewood adopted Resolution Number 203-10-13-20, authorizing the remainder of the City of Englewood's schedule of council meetings for 2020 to be held remotely via Zoom. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by calling or clicking on the link below at 7:30 PM, please see the link on our website, or by dialing 929-205-6099. The meeting ID for this meeting is 845-50872364 and the pass code is 594369. Individuals calling into this meeting will be able to fully participate in the meeting, including providing public comment. Public comments may be submitted by 3:00 PM on the date of the meeting, either through written letter or email to meeting@cityofanglewood.org. All written comments shall be read during the public forum portion of the meeting and shall be subject to the same time limitations for public speaking. Duplicative comments shall be noted for the record and summarized. The agenda for the meeting can be found on the city's website at cityofanglewood.org. A separate meeting will be used if closed session is required. Proper notice haven't been given, the municipal clerk is directed to include the statement in the minutes of the meeting.
Well, the city clerk, do the roll call.
Your councilman, Colin.
Here.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Here.
Councilman Hamer.
Here.
Council President Cobb.
Here.
Also present is Mayor Michael Wild, City Attorney Bill Bailey, and for the interim city manager Greg Fairback. Absent with prior notice is Councilwoman Cheryl Rosenberg.
Okay, first up, bills and claims. May I ask for a motion and a second to approve to approve bills and claims, Resolution 241, in the amount of $568,352.05. So I need a motion to approve and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? No one more questions? I have, I have a couple. Mr. Kaufman, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, on page one of four, for Leachman, Vincy, and Higgins LLP, $29,000, annual audit report for the year end of 2019. So how do we usually pay them, Mr. Kaufman? That's a big number and is it, is it on time or is it late or could you explain to me?
Well, they invoice us in portions, so whenever they invoice us, we pay it.
When you mean portions? So this is a portion, this is a portion, you're saying?
Yeah, this is a portion.
Okay. But you're saying you pay it in portions, so if we went back and looked at it, we would see portions of it being paid across the 2020, that's what you're saying to me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So is there, and is that normal practice for them to bill you in portions or they bill you once the job is complete?
That's they've always done. I guess they, they perform some part of the audit, they bill us, whatever, whatever, however they bill us, I don't know exactly their right, how they, their right and reason for it, but...
So this, this, is this, is this considered an aged item or would you consider it an aged item or not?
No.
You would say this is
Yeah, especially
within a, this bill, this billing of the 29,000, you would say is not three months old, four months old, you're saying it's less than 60 days, would you say that, or 90 days?
Yeah, less, yeah, I think so, but they just finished the audit like a month ago, so.
Okay, all right. Just hold tight, I got a couple of more questions for you. Hunnings and Bailey, it says $9,000, it says for December. We bill and bill and his, his team before they do the work or what are we doing, what is that? Or is that standard monthly?
That's their monthly contract.
So they're billed at the beginning of the month or the end of the month?
It varies, I mean, we're trying, we try to play it on time now because we used to be behind by a lot, so we try to pay it, you know, that they get their money.
No, so if it's a standard 9,000 a month, I believe, if that's a standard fee, why, why don't we set a standard date? It's either the first, the 15th, or the 30th, something that we know that we can expect that. Is that unreasonable to ask or is that you prefer to?
Yeah, there's so many, we get so many, I mean, accounts payable, they, they're dealing with so many invoices and bills, I don't know when she, when she gets to it, I guess that's when she pays it, but we're trying to pay it in the month that it's due, there's only two meetings a month, so.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying to you, if it's a standard amount of money, if we have that when any of our professionals, should we have it at the first of the month? You know, a standard date that we take care of all our professionals, whatever a standard fee is? Is that something we can do so that we make sure that these people are paid on time? And it's a regular, and anything else additionally just has to fall in as we receive these invoices and go through the regular process?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to the accounts payable person to set something up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, because that's a procedure that could be questioned during an audit. If you say somebody, this is a standard and they say, well, okay, if it's standard, you're paying it this time, you're paying it this time, you're paying it this time, why don't we just make it uniform, make everybody's life easier, I think, I mean, I, I don't know.
I don't think the other, the other, personally, I don't think the auditors care about that. I think Gary's on the line, he'll, if he would
Well, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for Gary, okay. All right, we can move on with that. Then the next one, I have Janobel Burns. And we have three payments there, one for $7,784.71, March, it says it right on the payment. We have one for $1,126.10, April, and then we have one for $260 in May. So are they old or?
These are
These are old, these are old?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, um, and, and then I'll ask you about the, a couple, I got three more, but these will be, it'll be quick. On page three of four, we have Body Temp Kiosk for $20,522. What, what, do you know exactly what that is?
Yeah, when we come into the building, all, and I, I think it's other, there's going to be a, a temperature kiosk and there's going to be like a turnstile. So if your temperature is over a certain amount, you won't be able to get in. And this is all going to be, this is, this is being put in for reimbursement, through the CARES Act. So it'll be reimbursable.
Okay. Um, so the, the other thing, I, I got a couple, yes.
If, if I can, Michael, I'm, I'm assuming that this is being done to comply with the governor's executive order. Is that true or is that not?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think it's important to say that to explain why this is being purchased and why it's being utilized in that fashion, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So, Mr. Kaufman, then we have one that says for, on same page, $24,600. Arena Weekly Covert Cleaning. So I, I, one would assume you're talking about the John T. Wright Arena?
Yeah.
It, my, my, my bigger question is, we're not paying $24,000, $24,600 a week? This, this is for, this is for, how much are we paying the breakdown? Do you know the breakdown is weekly, what we're, what this cost is for us?
I'll guess, I'll get you that.
Okay, all right. And the, and I know we use Millennium Strategies and $3,150, but what did they do for this? I know we have a regular bill with a monthly charge of $3,250, but this one is $3,150. Is it something that they did extra for us?
Yeah, this is, this is the coro, this is related to the Corona.
Right.
Submitting the bills, doing all that stuff. And this is also reimbursable by the CARES Act, so we're getting, we're getting back to that also.
So, and, and my last question for you on, on the, on the bills and claims. I noticed there are a number of items there that said emergency, you know, for the COVID stuff there. It, it would be helpful if you could to provide us with a little background in terms of what is the total cost that we are putting for these state emergency stuff aside? You know, instead of us having to go through and add everything up for ourselves and then pull it to the side, if you could just take that out, you know, you can leave it like it is, but just put a number at the bottom or tell us that in a memo or something, which would be helpful. So we would understand how much money we were actually spending because we're going into budget season and we want to know basically, you know, what type of spend it is, how much we've spent and invested on, in, in this stuff, even though we know that we're going to apply to get some of this money back or most of the money back.
Yeah, the deadline for the county CARE, the CARES is tomorrow.
Okay.
So what I plan on doing is after we do the last submission tomorrow, I'm going to do that for the council, I'll, I'll come up with what we spent. When we get the money back for this last submission, I'll, I'll say what we got back, so I'll do like a total recap.
Okay, yeah, we just need to know, it'd be interesting to see how much money we've spent, you know, in that, because that money's coming from somewhere. So when we get it back, we know that we have some funds to apply somewhere else, right?
Uh, for this year, yeah.
For this year, yeah, absolutely, okay. Thank you, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Kaufman? No? Roll call, Yancy, please.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
Yes.
Council President Cobb.
Yes. I declare a motion carried and bills and claims duly approved. Next, we have COVID-19 Special Emergency. Yancy, who's going to read this, a bill or you, are you going to do this, the resolution?
Uh, if, if you'd like for me to read the title, I, I
Yeah, title only, yeah.
One on the call to explain, to help explain if
Yeah, Gary's, Gary's here, so we could, we could get that as well, but if you could read it by title only.
This is Resolution Number 242-12-08-20, Resolution Approving the Certification of the Chief Financial Officer as to the Deficit in Operations of the City of Englewood, New Jersey, pursuant to NJSA 48:4-53M, and approving the submission of an application to the Director of the Division of Local Government Services in connection with the proposed funding of such deficit through a special emergency appropriation of the city.
I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 242.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, Council President, would you ask Mr.?
Kaufman?
Well, actually, it might be better if Gary sort of stepped us through what it is that we're being asked to act on. He spoke to it earlier, but it would be good to, since we're about to take action, you know, have him summarize what it is we're about to do.
Sure, Mr. Vincy, between you and Mr. Kaufman, could you step us through this?
Yes, I, I would be happy to. So there's three actions before the council tonight. Resolutions 242, 3, and Ordinance 20-08, they all pertain to the same item. So the state, two months ago, issued a directive that allowed government entities, counties, municipalities, to declare a special emergency to ensure that the government entity maintained their fiscal integrity, their fiscal responsibility, and basically provided budgetary relief for entities that suffered either significant shortfalls of revenue because of the pandemic or incurred considerable expenses as a result of the same pandemic. In Englewood situation, you really had revenue shortfalls that were directly related to the COVID-19. In the city's budget, you have revenue sources from hotel tax, parking garage, parking fees, court fines, and recreation. And we all know that because of businesses being closed, the revenues, especially with the recreation programs being put on hold, that a lot of the revenues in those five areas were not realized. And that's obviously a statewide issue. The Division of Local Government realized that they needed to provide a mechanism so that you were not depleting a significant amount of your surplus that you have started, you know, you have worked hard to replenish in one year. So the special emergency is acknowledging that you had a revenue shortfall. You're asking the division for a budgetary relief by allowing you to budget the shortfall, which right now is only an estimate. We obviously have another month left and Michael needs to obviously close out the city's financials in January before we can pinpoint the exact impact of surplus. But instead of you having a $900,000, $1 million shortfall in your surplus, they're allowing you basically to replenish that via a special emergency appropriation of $200,000 or $220,000 a year for five years there. The state is not requiring you to budget that next year. They give you a one-year waiver on that, but the $220,000 would then be raised in years 22 through 26. Quite a few municipalities have opted to declare that a special emergency. Obviously, the dollar amount is contingent on the impact locally. But the application or the resolution Number 242 is permitting Michael to submit an application, which is to be filed by tomorrow. It was originally due December 1. The state granted us a extension till after tonight's meeting. And Resolution 243 is a special emergency resolution acknowledging that there was a revenue shortfall of 1.1 million and the ordinance is allowing you to fund that over five years. So all three actions basically deal with the same topic.
So Gary, what would, well, Michael would have to answer this, where do we stand right now in terms of our, our financials? But more importantly, what is the impact going forward to the budget after the one-year waiver?
I just want to add also that doesn't, doesn't mean that we have to borrow the money. It doesn't mean that we have to do any of this, it's just giving us the option. If, even if we have, if it would be a million dollars, let's just say, it would affect our budget that we would have to, in 22 to 20 years, 2022 to 2026, we'd have to budget an extra $200,000 plus interest for this quote-unquote loan that we're taking out just to cover surplus.
Right. And these actions, even if we take them tonight, doesn't mean we have to borrow the money?
Exactly, 100%.
This is just giving us an option, we're just taking action to have an option tonight.
Yeah, if we didn't do it, then we wouldn't have the option.
We wouldn't have the option, and if we fell short, then we'd have a problem.
Yes.
Okay, that's what you should have said.
Right, so just adding to that, it does give you budgetary flexibility. And as I mentioned earlier, it gives you time to have Michael close out the financials because if the 1.1 is very conservative and is inflated, we can always ask the council to adjust that number so that the impact in future budget years, instead of being 220, could be significantly less. So there is flexibility that you're allowing yourself just to make those decisions in early 2021.
Right, and so as revenues, we hope come, come on board with Direct and other places and parking meters and things of that nature, we can use tho, those revenues to help pay this stuff down, right?
Yeah.
Any other question, anybody got any questions? Okay. So I believe I asked for a motion and a second approval on 242, right? I think that we did that, Yancy?
Yes, that was done.
That was done, so then we have to, we, we got to do a roll call for that? And then I believe we'll do, and since Gary said we already talked about 243, then I'll need them. Well, let's do 242, then we'll go back to 243 and then we'll go to the ordinance, okay? Is that the easiest way to do that?
I think so, yes.
Okay, sounds good, okay, so let's do a roll call for 242.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
Yes.
Council President Cobb.
Yes. I declare a motion carried and Resolution 242-12-08-20 duly approved. Now we go to Resolution 243-12-08-20. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Yancy, can we do a roll call, please?
Violence and security issues.
Hello, somebody's We hear some, somebody's got some back, back noise?
Councilman Cohen, what's your vote?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
Yes.
Council President Cobb.
Yes, I vote yes, I declare the motion carried and Resolution 243-12-08-20 duly approved. Now we have to go to Ordinance 2008. We need to introduce the ordinance entitled, Yancy, you want to read it, the title, please?
This is Ordinance of the City of Englewood and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, Providing for a Special Emergency Appropriation Pursuant to NJSA 48:4-53M to Fund a Deficit in Operation.
Um, so, yeah, I moved the ordinance that the ordinance passed on the first reading and published the second, okay. We need a council member, we need a, I guess we need a
A motion.
A motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilman Cohen.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
Yes.
Council President Cobb.
Yes, I declare a motion carried. Next, we have ordinances for public hearing and second reading. Consideration will be given to Ordinance 2007. Will the clerk please read the ordinance by title?
This is an ordinance amending the Municipal Land Use Ordinance of the City of Englewood to create the Englewood South Redevelopment Overlay Zone, the SROZ, for the Englewood South Redevelopment Area.
I declare the public hearing on this ordinance is now open. If there's anyone who desires to be heard or to ask questions concerning this ordinance, he or she will be heard at this time, please come forward. Have a, raise your hand and Yancy will let you in, give your name and your address for the record.
Everyone, please, at the bottom of your screen, there's the more button. If you'd like to make a public comment or ask a question, just click on there, raise your hand and we'll be placing you. Not seeing anyone. No, no members of the public.
Okay, if no one wishes to be heard, I will now close the public hearing. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
I'll second it. Roll call, Yancy.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
Yes.
Council President Cobb.
Yes, I declare a motion carried and the ordinance duly adopted and that once the ordinance be published, once by title only in the record. Next, we need a motion to introduce Ordinance 2009 entitled, could you read the title, Yancy?
This is an ordinance amending Section 56-1 pertaining to post-retirement benefits for the positions of the Chief and Deputy Chief of the City of Englewood Police Department.
Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
I'll second. Mr. Bailey, could you give us a little background on this, step us through this a little bit?
Uh, yes, sir, this ordinance has to do with, it was a little bit of a vacuum in terms of our ordinances regarding what happens for a deputy chief or police chief. You're not necessarily subject to the collective bargaining agreement as are patrolmen through captain. Was, so this was to codify and memorialize, for introduction at this point, what the benefits are or not for deputy chief and the chief insofar as accrued sick time. Previously, and, and we had done this when Deputy Chief Holstead retired and as was his predecessor and perhaps even before that. Under the collective bargaining agreement that exists at this time, for your time of service as a patrolman through captain, you can get up to 150 accrued sick days. That, that is a binding agreement with the union, that's in effect. However, in terms of what happened to accrued sick time, once you were deputy chief or police chief and no longer part of that collective bargaining unit, what was the entitlement? So what this does is it basically says that the deputy chief and chief in those positions going forward, this has to apply prospectively, not to people that already have vested rights, by the way, that it would clarify that while you're entitled to what you're entitled under collective bargaining agreement, while you were a patrolman through a captain, you're no longer accruing sick time while you're in the position of deputy chief or police chief. So it's a, an effort to memorialize that and codify that in our personnel ordinance.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
Is this a blind spot, Mr. Bailey? Are there other blind spots like this? In other words, in any other Um, in other words, in any other departments? Um, how this, I, I appreciate your professionalism in finding it. Um, you know, should, how did you find it? And are there other departments we should be looking for similarly?
Um, yeah, we could do a review of other departments. Frankly, it came up in the context of the deputy chief retiring. Um, and we went back and pulled the past practices of prior administrations and prior city managers in, in terms of what historically had been done because the ordinance can be interpreted different ways. This, I believe, clarifies it though now going forward. But to your point, Mayor, yes, we, we could look at other positions similar to this throughout the city where people had a period of time where they're recovered by the union, but then no longer are.
I'd leave it in your capable hands, Mr. Cobb, then, if you want to assign somebody to look at it or the new incoming city manager, perhaps.
So, Mr. Bailey, I guess the question is, this doesn't, this doesn't harm anybody in those positions. It just makes it clear what they're entitled to, that's what you're saying? It's not taking anything, right?
It's not taking anything away from people that are already in the position.
Right.
But going forward, uh, it would apply to new, a new deputy chief, a new police chief, for example. But it, it, it doesn't, for example, apply to the existing chief. The deputy chief, we now avoid an empty position to make insis. So whoever fills that position, if this is adopted at the next meeting, this would apply to that person.
Yeah, but for the fire department, other departments, if it's there, it's a good, it's a good matter to.
Yep.
Okay, roll call. If any, no other questions, we could do the roll call, right?
Yep.
Okay, Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
Yes.
Council President Cobb.
Yes. I declare a motion carried. Okay, um, if anyone from the public wishes to speak on resolutions two forty-two to two forty-seven, the public has to state their name, address, and reminds them to speak only on the resolutions. You only can speak on these resolutions.
Same thing, same thing for the members of the public. Bottom of your screen, the more button, click on that, raise hand if you have any questions. Not seeing anyone.
Well, we can. Okay, so I'm gonna ask that we do these by unanimous consent, Nancy?
Yes, unless someone would like one of them pulled and voted on separately.
Unless, unless somebody else, somebody here on the council would like to call any. I'm gonna look at two forty-two, two forty, excuse me, two forty-four through two forty-seven for unanimous consent vote. I need a second, I mean, a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn. Councilman Hamer.
Yes.
Council President Cobb.
Yes, I declare a motion carried and the resolution is duly adopted. Resolutions for discussion. Chapter one fifty-nine resolutions.
Um, I believe Mr. Kaufman can.
Mr. Kaufman, is that you?
Yes.
Yep, please.
Those are just the grants that we've received throughout the year. We have to pass a resolution. That's all, that's all it is.
So we, they'll be on the twenty seconds, uh, meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is, I believe the next one is you as well, Mr. Kaufman, authorized avoiding of outstanding checks?
Yeah, we're also, the, uh, supposed to, uh, void checks every year and either reissue them or, or void them totally, so we're voiding these checks.
So let me ask you, when you void the checks, do you destroy the checks as well?
We don't, we, we don't necessarily have the checks, so we go on lot, we go on the, on the website and the bank's webs cancel it.
Okay, so what, what security did we, do we get back from the bank that they've been voided since you're going on the website?
Well, the bank, the bank gives us the confirmation on, you know, we print it out and we have it, so.
You keep that, okay, all right. Just making sure, you know, cy- cyber stuff goes on today, you never know what's gonna happen, right?
Yep.
Refunds due to overpayment of taxes?
That's, that's the normal currency there, because of duplicate payments or usually that's the reason why the mortgage company pays and the homeowner pays.
Okay, so we'll have something on the next meeting as well, right, for that? Uh, refund due to state tax appeals?
Uh, Council President, that has to do with tax appeals that were filed with the state tax court.
Okay.
And refunds entitled to those, to those persons that filed, that were approved by the court.
All right, okay, sounds good. January meeting schedule, I would ask, Nancy, I believe you probably made that up, right?
If everyone will please look in, in their packet. So as you know, the normal schedule of meetings we have is the first and third Tuesdays of the month.
Yes.
In this case, for January, uh, the third Tuesday is the regular meeting for the nineteenth. Uh, but for the workshop meeting, I'm asking you to make the decision between the first or the second Tuesday of the month because the reorganization meeting is the fourth, which is the first Monday of the month. So you would have back-to-back meetings on the fourth and the fifth. Um, otherwise, your other option is to do the following Tuesday on the twelfth. So if you would please let me know and I'll prepare that resolution for.
Okay.
For the following meeting. Does anyone have any, I mean, if, has everybody had a chance to look at their calendars? Would you like to look, double-check? Please let me know. But I, you would just go by the next meeting.
Mr. Hamer?
Just a question, so if we adopt a, a change in, as opposed to the fifth, I think it is, uh, first Tuesday, uh, meeting on the twelfth, that means then that, uh, we couldn't, well, we could introduce an ordinance, but we couldn't adopt it during January. We'd have to let it roll into February.
Yep.
All right.
May I ask, when is the reorg, uh, Mr. Cobb?
January fourth.
Thank you.
And I, I was thinking also about maybe doing, um, January sixth, some skipping going Monday.
Is that what you were thinking, January sixth?
Not the reorg, the, um, the workshop meeting, but the education reorg is on the sixth. So I didn't want a double of meetings since they were advertised for theirs and we haven't advertised for ours.
Right, okay. All right, so we need to get back to Nancy, what the dates work for us in January? So let's keep in mind, and Nancy, you probably, well, we're gonna have two other new members in there as well, so we gotta make sure it works for them as well.
I'll reach out to them, sure.
All right. Last one, shared service agreements with the borough of Paramus for maintenance and repair of vehicles. Who's gonna, who can speak to that, or we don't have anybody who can speak to that? Mr. Kaufman? Is he still here?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, are you aware of the shared services agreement we have at Paramus now? Or we don't have one? I believe we have something with them, right?
Yeah, I think like fire trucks, if we have, uh, they repair, they repair those sometimes, or DPW trucks, certain things they're able to repair and it's cheaper than bringing it to a place, uh, that's, we do this yearly.
Yeah, we, we, we may want to look at that. See if we're really getting the bang for our buck and are there other places that we can take our vehicles to be maintained as well? We gotta ask the folks that are taking them there. Are they satisfied with the services that they're getting?
So, uh, Council President?
Yes, sir.
So in, in terms of analysis, uh, and I guess this is a question for, for Greg, how, how do we evaluate and, uh, make sure that we are getting everything that we should be out of this shared service agreement? Uh, it's been ongoing for, you know, uh, some time, but, you know, how do we make sure that it's, you know, we're, we're best served staying with it or, uh, looking at, looking at some, uh, alternatives to make sure we maximize what we're, we're paying and getting?
Different municipalities, um, perform this in different ways. Uh, some of them have, uh, joint committees, uh, that, uh, review it on a periodic basis, such as every three months, every six months, every twelve months. In this particular case, um, I'm not familiar with what the circumstances are, uh, but if you'll give me, uh, several days, um, I will get you all an explanation and explain to you, um, what evaluation has been done for this, uh, shared services agreement to be renewed, uh, when the last time was that it was renewed and how long this period is. I was under the impression someone else is going to have information on this, so I'm sorry I didn't have it available to you, but I will within the next five business days.
That wasn't, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I just, you know, am asking because I think you'd have familiarity with, you know, the process.
Uh, a- as I said, if, if you're looking at it generally, an individual municipality will often go through an analysis to determine more or less what Mr. Cobb had indicated before as to whether or not it's valuable to continue that, um, arrangement. Um, others have, uh, joint committees in which all of the members of the shared services agreement sit down on a periodic basis going through an evaluation. I'm not aware that that's the case, um, in the, uh, Paramus Shared Services Agreement. But I will also supply you that regarding this particular shared services agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I think that would be very helpful, Greg. So we, we can find out exactly what it is and how we, what benefits we're getting or lack of there and what other options do we have. It's just good practice to explore that. Okay. Thank, thank you. No, we have no ordinances for discussion and items for discussion, hiring a planner. We've obviously.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
Might I ask for just a shift in, in order? Uh, we have someone from the SID here to discuss the parking meters and, uh, you know, the short discussion because of, I'm sure many of, I'm sure all of us have seen the new parking meters on Palisade Avenue and, you know, you know, just get a brief update as to where we are on that project.
So, so what you're asking me is to move the parking meters bullet to the top of the list?
That is correct.
Okay, we can, we can do that. Okay, so who's gonna, you, uh, Mr. Hamer, you could, you can usher this one and speak to it as well as whoever else is from the SID to give us an update.
I'd like to, uh, if, if we could, hear from, uh, Ms. Linda Dunham, uh, who is the, uh, vice chair of, uh, the SID and she can talk us through, uh, where we are in this phase of rollout.
I'll move her over, Mr. Cobb.
Excuse me? I can't, Nancy, what'd you say?
Would you like me to move her over to speak?
Yes, please. Let her speak.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody, and, and thank you for this opportunity to speak and thank you, uh, Councilman Hamer, for moving me from the next to last to, um, just a little bit up the agenda. So.
Thought you might enjoy that.
This will be a brief, uh, inter, a brief, uh, report. Uh, as you may have noticed, the Long Palisade Avenue, you'll see that we have the new meters installed and they run from the monument up just a bit past, uh, Grand Engle Streets. This is phase one, and phase one, uh, allows us to put in new meters as opposed to what we looked at before, which was an upgrade. The upgrade just was, uh, cost prohibitive. So we have these new meters that are going in and we also, uh, have an opportunity to also provide new signage at the same time that these media meters are going in. We have some fifteen zones and there was so much clutter and confusion throughout, so we'll have some new signage to present at some point. Uh, we've looked at it in our meeting last week and I think it's gonna help make it very clear for anybody parking wherever, what the restrictions are, whether you head in park or, you know, park in towards the meter, how long you can stay and what the cost would be. We want to, of course, we want to make sure that everything is up and running smoothly before we move along. So what we've done, uh, so far is just the beginning stages before we take on a, a bigger or a larger, uh, part of providing meters throughout the city of Englewood. But what I wanted to let you know is there's an audit feature to these new meters and I think that's very important because this audit feature allows us to know in real time just how much money is in each meter box. So you have one meter that may have a dollar in it. You may have another meter that's, uh, gonna reach its max in another day. We'll be able to send somebody out there and that person will be able to, um, remove the funds from that one meter that is overloaded rather than sticking to the whatever pre-conscribed, pre-prescribed, uh, pickup date would be. So we think that's a good function because we'll always know what's in those meters. Um, just to let you know a little bit about the meters, Palisade, uh, along the Palisade is the most active, most often-used parking for us and that's where we've had our bigger problems. At this point, that's gonna be limited to a ninety-minute period of time along Palisades Avenue and it will cost a dollar for a person to park there per hour, which means it'll be a dollar fifty because it's ninety minutes. Uh, the, uh, side streets, uh, along the way would be, uh, two hours at seventy-five cents an hour, which means that's a dollar fifty again. And on the surface lots, you'll have the ability to park there for three hours at fifty cents an hour, uh, as appropriate to the location. But what's important to note is you can pay with a credit card or with quarters. So Park Mobile, who used to manage the, uh, uh, used to charge each of the parkers, whenever you parked your car, Park Mobile's charged twenty-five cents every time you use your credit card. Well, we're gonna have to absorb that this time, but the way that we feel like we'll make up the difference is if you park for half an hour and you use your credit card, you're gonna get charged a dollar fifty, no matter where you park in the one, the ninety-minute up to three-hour lots. You're gonna be charged a minimum of a do- dollar fifty. So basically, if I park there for thirty minutes and I move, the next person comes in and they park thirty minutes, I'm, you're getting a dollar fifty for each one of those, um, vehicles there. The, at, at this time, um, that's basically where we are with the meters. We, uh, plan to be live on January fourth, uh, and with the phase one and then we look at other parts of this. Uh, we think it's an exciting time and we think it's efficient and we think the town really needs to have, this isn't sort of like, uh, conforming to what most cities are doing in terms of having parking, having the credit card function available. And, um, certainly, we want to make sure there's less confusion. We understand the importance of parking in downtown for our, uh, our businesses. So thank you, uh, at this point, that's the update. I told you it would be brief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamer, you got any thing you want to add to that?
Just to, uh, you know, add a little bit of, of background to, uh, what was being said. The meters that we had prior to these, uh, these meters being installed, you know, had, had run their course, you know, some time ago. Uh, we weren't able to, as a city, we're not able to, uh, get replacement parts for them and we were getting to the point where if, uh, they were disabled, then, uh, there wouldn't be a replacement for them. Uh, we weren't there yet, but it was quickly approaching that. So it was well past the time for us to, you know, do an upgrade. They, they look good, uh, and as Ms. Dunham said, uh, there will be greater accountability and, um, you know, there's a, a better arrangement all the way up and down. So, uh, you know, take a look at them, start to get used to it. Uh, we will need to do a, an advertising campaign, you know, a marketing campaign just to, uh, acquaint people with the meters and as was said, uh, parking is going to be, you know, enunciated in a different way so that, uh, zones are identified and if you're coming into Englewood to shop, you know, you'll know where to park to maximize what you're going to do. So there's, you know, if you're just going to be there for a quick shopping trip in and out, there are areas that you should park. If you're going to be there for an extended appointment, uh, there are areas that you should park. If you're going to be in town for several hours, then, uh, you know, there is another area, area to park. So this starts to make, make sense and, and make things much more efficient and.
Could I, may I also add that right now, there's a holiday, you know, where we don't pay for parking, and you have to bag the, put a bag over the meters. This new meter system that we have, you can certainly program the meters to, you know, whatever makes sense without having to manually have someone go out physically and, and bag the meters. So that's another function that we would have to, we could eliminate.
I was saving that because that's an opportunity for us to put Michael's face on, that's Michael Wild, it's not Cohen, Michael's face on the display so everyone can see him and he can deliver a holiday message every year.
If I can, Charles, the, the interesting thing is that the dynamic is changing in the Central Business District. I got about six phone calls in the last few days, where are the bags? I don't trust that I can park and I'm not gonna get a ticket unless I see a bag on the meter. Where we have now restaurants who aren't for social distancing permitted to have more than a certain amount of people, and they need muster meters in areas where people can physically get in and out quickly. So I want to applaud the Sid. I have the privilege, and they're very gracious to allow me to attend all the meetings because they're working very much in tandem with the Chamber of Commerce and all the new businesses that are coming in and the new central business dynamic that we're having. So I, they even look smarter, and the fact that people can use their credit cards and they may pay a little more will help us with our shortfall for the income. And I just want to thank Wayne and Linda and everybody because they're doing an excellent job. It's, it's not easy, and, you know, Adam Brown and a lot of other people are really working on the science and trying to bring us up to speed with other communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, on that update. And we will, I guess, when you, I guess, when, when, the 26th or the 27th, Wayne, you'll unveil those meters because right now they're free, everything is free?
Everything's free until the end of the holiday season. I'm not sure what the stop date is, but it's.
It's heard to January 26th, December.
So 27th, so 27th, we, we'll open them up?
Right.
Okay.
Councilman Cobb, I had a couple of questions.
Yes, please, please.
So I think it sounds really promising, especially the credit card functionality. And I haven't tried using these meters myself. So does it actually take your card or do you have to scan something?
So where this is in place now, there is a kiosk, if you will, and that's where you would go and put your credit card in your parking space if there's a number and get a ticket back and put that on your dashboard.
I see. Okay. Oh, so that's like several other towns around them. Okay. How are we going to explain the sort of convenience fee, if you will, for using the credit card? Because I think if some people see a sign and it says, you know, a dollar, and then they get charged a dollar fifty, I think we'll get queried about that. So, because Linda, you mentioned signage, which is very welcome. Will that be part of it or, because it's a little bit complicated to explain that?
The signage is still being worked on. I haven't seen the one yet for the maximum payment or minimum payment, I should say, for the dollar fifty. But I know that's part of the discussion that we are having to make sure that everyone is clear about not only the restrictions, but what the cost would be to park. So I'll have to get back to you with that sign when I, when I've seen it, reviewed it.
Okay, okay, that'd be great. And could you just remind us of the, the funding for the meters? In other words, how are we paying for them? And the revenue from the meters goes where? Just so everyone in the public is clear.
Okay, so Wayne, I'll need you to check TV on this one. But right now, the Sid is paying for the meters and the installation. And it's my understanding that at some point, the city, from the revenue received in those meters, will pay back the Sid. Wayne, tell me the length of time. I don't know if I remember the terms.
Well, it, it, it is as, as the revenues are realized. So we expend, you know, the Sid expends the cost, and as the, you know, parking revenues come in, it pays down the amount of the expenditure.
So it's not a set five-year repayment plan or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And then once the meters are paid off, is the idea that the revenue comes into the city's coffers?
Totally.
Yes.
Okay, because I, I did hear a rather large number earlier about how much the parking actually adds up to on an annual basis. So I would think we'd be paying off those meters quickly. I mean, COVID aside, I guess.
Part of that is a conversation that we're going to have to have as a council. We also need to look at, you know, making it downtown friendly and shopper friendly so that we entice people to come back and make it easy on them. So, you know, the, the fees aren't, aren't, you know, over the top. So, you know, we can keep them as they're, they're, they're built in our, in our laws and ordinances. Or we can look at ways to make things a little more attractive for shoppers to, and easier for shoppers to come and, you know, park downtown. But all of that's something we can work on. These are easily programmable, and we can, we can go through that exercise, you know, as it gets closer to that time.
And do we have a vendor who does the programming?
We do. The vendor is IPS. Yes, and they are training our staff in the next few weeks to, you know, to operate and program when needed. So, and including putting Michael's face up there.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Linda or Councilman Hamer regarding the meters?
Well, just one last comment. People will be upset if they have to put in a dollar fifty for a credit card in order just to run in someplace for five minutes. What was promised was a couple of muster meters where you'll have up to maybe 10 minutes. The debate was between 10 and 15 minutes. 10 is probably smarter, where people can wait, go in there and not have to pay any amount of money. So, and that's separate and apart from handicap because the law in New Jersey does not allow handicap signs to be at a meter post. So we have to really make sure with an age-friendly notion that we're looking at handicap muster for, you know, pickup and then the kind of demand financially we'll have in the community. But this will make revenue shortfall a lot easier for us to anticipate when it's all electronic, less physical wear and tear on the officers, the parking attendants that have to pick up the cash and so forth.
So just for clarity's sake, I'm not certain that there was ever any agreement or promise that there would be the short, shorter stay meters. So that's something, you know, we can discuss a little bit further. But, you know, my strong recollection is that we did not agree or promise that that would be the case. But it certainly can be talked about.
I, I see often in retail areas where there are special spaces for Uber or other delivery services and that are limited to X number of minutes. And everybody's doing curbside parking now, you know, because no one's going inside. So there are those things available, but I guess as a discussion is had probably beyond the Sid about this, the meters will have the ability to be programmed accordingly. Or there would be signage that makes it clear that this parking is for those delivery pickup or curbside pickup only.
And, and there was a conversation, Wayne, in the last meeting where Adam Brown actually brought that forward, and he was doing a 15-minute kind of muster stop. And he felt that 15 was too long. It's better correct Linda to have something like a 10-minute. But that handicap and maybe an Uber station, because they have so many restaurants over there that are only surviving on, on delivery, has to be taken into account.
Sure.
Sure.
Yep. So I'm sure Ms. Ms. Dunham, you know, as a business owner, she probably sees the same thing. So we, we gotta make it friendly as we can. So I guess at your next meeting.
Friendly for businesses and convenient for our customers.
Correct, correct. So I guess at your next meeting, y'all can take that up and see how we put that into play as well.
Okay.
But this is a start, so this is great to hear.
Long overdue.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Dunham, for your update. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you all. Good night.
So. So the next thing we can talk about is a planner. And I, I guess we've, we've been kicking it around. We've had those conversations and, and we see that the city needs a planner for things that it, it does or things that we intentionally want to do. So I think that we need to start to consider that, and we can put that out to bid. We can, you know, put that on the agenda for next time, but we can put it out to bid and get RFPs out there for somebody or whoever is interested in becoming our city planner for projects that we want to pursue.
Should we, Council President, should we put a timeline on, or, you know, a deadline on when we want to, you know, introduce that and, and, and get information back so we can make a decision?
Yeah, but here's, here, I, I think we're in a quandary because, right, we have one more meeting left. Right? And so the, the question is, do we want to do something before, before the last meeting? Or do we want to have this conversation now with the intentions on addressing this in the new year?
Well, are we, I don't think we're doing this, you know, we need to do this by ordinance, you know?
Right. So by, by ordinance, so we, we would, I, I guess we would need to try to do this by the end of January.
No, so Bill?
Yeah, it's by resolution.
By resolution?
Right, yeah. So we're not bound by, you know, doing something now. Right.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Professionals, including planners, getting hired in January, so you could.
Go ahead, Mr. Bailey. What were you saying? You, you kind of fell out.
Typically, the professionals are hired in January.
Right.
So you could perhaps look to do it in January. Do an RFP process, what have you. You know, historically, when Ken Albert's office was the city engineer, Ken was also a planner. So he was available on a day-to-day basis for kind of more routine planning issues. Since Ken retired, we've kind of been retaining planners on a project-by-project basis, which is fine, too. But it's worthwhile because you have smaller issues that come up often, and it's nice to be able to, whether it's the city manager or even myself, pick up the phone and be able to talk to a planner about, you know, hey, we want to, you know, the council's interested in doing thus and such, you know, whether it's banners or things like that. It's helpful to have someone kind of on call like that. And that's, then they become very familiar with the city, too, by the way.
Right. So this is something you're telling us that we should be based on trying to do it in, in January. Is that what you're saying?
Typically, that's when those appointments are made under our.
All right. But we, we need, we, we, we have a need that we, we gotta take care. So I, I think that that's, we're trying to clarify that tonight. Right?
Councilman Cobb?
Yes.
Can you, someone clarify? So this planner position we're talking about right now is distinct from the discussion we had regarding Liberty School?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, because the Liberty School is something that's specific for that, and that planner is actually come, has a mandate to come up and draft the RFP for us.
Right.
This, this planner will be something that, as Bill said, the city manager or himself or, or the council may need somebody with guidance during the course of the year. That's totally different. So we're separating that. We, we've got somebody for Liberty School. That's something, that's one thing. But other projects that are going on in, in the city where we need a planner's guidance, that we have somebody on board for us where they could pick, where we could pick the phone up and have a conversation and get some guidance and direction.
Right. So what would the process be if you were going to hire in January? Would you put the word out that we're interested in planners and people submit records? Because for.
Yeah.
Professional says you don't typically do an RFP, right? Is that, is, would that be the process?
No, a- as Mr. Bailey, I believe, what, what Mr. Bailey just said, we would do an RFP, right, Bill? Am I correct in saying that or am I not?
You, you could definitely do that. For example, again, not to harp on Ken Albert, when, when Ken Albert was around, everyone was comfortable with Ken. He'd been doing it for many years. So he would just routinely get hired, you know, as the planner because everyone knew his work and his work product and things like that. So, so you can go in either direction, actually. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Right. So, you know, there's more to come on this, on this topic.
Council President?
Yes.
Yeah, City Clerk had, it was looking, looked like she was anxious to share something about the subject.
I, I, sorry, I thought you were asking about the RFP process on what's involved in the RFP process. It like, so.
I think we were trying to, you know, I think, no, not yet. We, we'll have questions for that at some time.
Just so we know, it's not something that you can have done within a week or two.
Right, right, right. We understand. Yeah, we definitely know it's a, it's an involved process, yeah.
I mean, at a minimum, your, your notice has to be out once it's published for 20 days while you.
Yeah. Correct. It, it, it basically here is the conversation to start thinking about, these are some of the things that we need and let, how do we get prepared to, to move forward on some of these things, right?
If I can also maybe suggest giving us services or maybe a job description of what it is that the council is looking for, that would be helpful.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll work with Mr. Bailey on that to come up with something. Mr. Bailey, and, and if we have something, we got Franz here. Since he wanted to dial in tonight, we, we got him here as well. We can have a collaboration because there are other things that we were looking at. For example, Palisade Court and other things, zoning issues, right, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah.
Those zoning is to, that's, and that's where we really needed to, to, to give us some guidance on some of the zoning issues and things that we're looking to, to look into addressing so that would help stimulate commerce downtown. So that's where we need to get some guidance on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe it would help if Bill gave a couple of examples of what, maybe what a planner does that seems to be part of the confusion. What exactly does a planner do and?
For example, you have large projects, for example, Liberty School, our COA stuff. Those are easily identifiable, large projects where we've hired planners specific to those tasks. But what happens is every week, an issue will, a planning issue will come up. And unless you kind of have a planner on retainer, it's hard to get an answer quickly without waiting for a public meeting, doing a resolution to authorize it. And typically, what you would see is some type of monthly retainer that's billed against that. So if it's X amount of dollars, but in the month of January, they only do Y, you only get charged for Y. It's a not-to-exceed amount. However, they're at least accessible to the city officials on a daily basis for more general things that come up, such as broader planning issues within the city that might not be site-specific. Again, not like the Liberty School or COA things. Those are very large, specific projects. This is more a global, general type of thing to have someone to run this stuff, pass for, and get their expertise on a more steady basis.
Mr. Council President?
Yes.
If I can just comment?
Sure.
In a municipality of this size, it is not uncommon that you would actually have a planner on staff as opposed to doing this as an RFP or as an independent contractor, somebody doing it on a part-time basis. And you would have that planner integrated into the operations of the planning board and the zoning board and would be essentially an advisor for all three, all three parties. And I know that Ms. Thompson Chen has been looking into that question. And I am not. looking into that question, and I am not aware as to what its status is in the budget development process. But I think you also ought to think about this as essentially a community development feature within the community as opposed to it being a hired independent contractor who just comes in to answer some questions and then is not fully integrated into the governmental operations and the city's needs and the city's master plan, et cetera. It's just another way of looking at it.
Thank you. Mr. Volsey, you want to add anything?
No.
Dealing with planners?
Essentially, Greg is correct. I mean, you want to have someone that's integrated in the city. Not to, not to just, you know, ensure that the overall planning goals of the cities are met, specifically when it comes to the objectives of the master plan. But, you know, a city plan would just ensure that any development, you know, that goes in front of the boards or the planning board, Board of Adjustment, that those developments adhere to the city's set zoning requirements. And of course, have the governing body to make sense of any zoning ambiguities and provide clarity when interpretation is needed. So it is key to have someone that is familiar with the city itself, the day-to-day runnings, and is very familiar with what the master plan tends to do and be there to make sure that it's implemented correctly.
Right, so I, it sounds like this, this, this needs a lot of discussion and focus, and I believe that the right way to do it is probably based on what you and Greg are saying, is to do the RFP process so you make sure that you get exactly what you're looking for, but also describe what you're looking for as well, right? What the expectation is. So that whoever that party is understands what our expectations are from that party, what the deliverables are, right? Okay, all right, good conversation. So next we have the, and I've received a few calls around this, and I think Mr. Hamer as well, increasing deer population and what people have been spending to try to address this as well as, you know, noticing a number of them getting hit. And I asked for Jim Fedorko, I believe Jewel asked him to attend this meeting. I don't know if he's on. Is he on, Nancy?
Yes, he is.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm on mute.
Okay.
I'm muted and I'm on mute, sorry.
I'm here.
Okay, Jim, so, you know, Jim, we're looking for ways to try to address the population increase and the deers and how we can handle it in a way that's good for them and for us. You know, because people are spending a lot of money, they're eating all the vegetation around their houses and they're marching on and a lot of us are experiencing that. So do you know any programs or anything in the county or in the state where we can get some resources to come in to give us some guidance and help with this?
Last December, we, we had a presentation about doing a survey of the deer population. It was almost, it was a year ago to see what our deer population is, and we're going to compile the data from 2020 on, on the number of deer complaints and the number of deer kills. That'll be done after December 31st and also motor vehicle accidents, crashes that involve deer. And we could do some type of presentation in January if that would.
Yeah, I think what we need help in, you know, is how do we control it as best we can? And I know when they had those presentations about a year ago or so, and then they were talking about people coming in with bow and all kinds of things to that. But, you know, is there a way we can deal with this in a safe way for them and for us? I mean, you know, and, you know, many people are saying how much money they are spending to have, I guess, certain chemicals put on their lawns and, you know, and around their homes to deter the deer from eating all their plants and things of that nature. And I can tell you, you just see an increase now. It's even more so. I mean, we always saw them, but I'm even seeing them more now. I mean, a lot more. It's just every day you see them and you're walking around and, you know, and you're also seeing a lot of them getting killed, which I don't want to see that happen as well. So I'm just saying, what do we do? How can we control it if we can, if we can't? Or what is, what are you getting hearing from the state, Jim, or are you hearing anything from them or the county in terms of trying to address this issue?
I think it's a very difficult issue.
I'm sure, yeah.
About, I put something together and I'll present it to you, the President, Councilman Cobb, and to the incoming city manager, and then we could take discussion further.
Okay.
This is Thomas May.
Yes.
There was a gentleman, Richard Solzer, who said that he had spoken to both you and Mr. Hamer about the issue. And there's a specific intelligence here that we need to look at. There was a good citizen in our community that actually hosted groups of mayors in the neighboring communities because one community can't deal with this issue without then creating a problem for other communities, and Flat Rock has a very comprehensive plan. One of the considerations is to see whether or not, not in the front of the homes, where we would allow a deer fence to be erected temporary or just two more feet than the six-foot limit, the council could enact an ordinance that would effectively allow deer access, it would restrict deer from having access onto the backs of people's homes as opposed to the front of people's homes. There's a lot of communities that object to the bows and the taking down of deer, and it is, as our health director said, a very delicate issue. But in the meantime, there's a lot of harm and damage, and there are deer that will jump six-foot fences. But I think there are some clever ordinances that can be put forward. And now's the season. There's a family outside my, my home right now on my front lawn. And it's robust. So, you know, again, it's something we talked about, and I think there's some interesting, you addressed this year very handsomely, the noise ordinance. This is another one of those areas where at least you can do something, I think.
Michael Cohen.
Yep. And, you know, Mayor, as you know, actually, before you, before you were back on, as Mayor, I had actually introduced, you know, or asked the council to pass a resolution specifically. I agree with you entirely, Mayor. I introduced the resolution, or I, sorry, I requested that a resolution be introduced to do exactly that two years ago when we talked about, two and a half years ago or so, we talked about this where after having, as a member of the Deer Task Force and as also as, having spoken to a number of the deer experts, they had conclusively pretty much said that deer can get over a six-foot fence but can't get over an eight-foot fence. And the thing that I had proposed at that point was saying, you know, particularly in places, in houses and in places that are vulnerable, I mean, their rear yards and side yards, we were getting a lot of complaints about deer showing up in people's backyards, about, you know, you know, the danger composed the families, the children. I mean, I, you know, I, I remember specifically, you know, discussing at that point. I mean, my daughter, who's now 11 at that point, when I mentioned it, was eight or nine, and saying, you know, I come out to the backyard one time and seen her face-to-face with a fully mature deer. I mean, those aren't the kind of things that any parent or any person wants to see. You know, and to be, and obviously, we have to worry about the aesthetics. That was one of the concerns back then. But if we, if we allow for deer fencing, you know, in the, in the rear yards and in the, and, you know, halfway up the side yards that don't affect the aesthetics, that was what I specifically had proposed two and a half to three years ago, which this council, what else I discussed, some members on this council that are in here weren't on at that point, outwardly rejected. One of the comments that were made at that point was that, well, deer are, you know, docile animals, so it's not a danger, so why do it? I, you know, if there's a fully mature deer and I've got my little daughter outside, I don't care how docile you tell me a deer is, I'm not as a parent comfortable with that. I think there is a way, like I said three years ago, to be able to amend the fence ordinance as it currently stands, knowing we have a deer problem. We've seen all the data a million times. You know, and I respect that, you know, Jim will get us more updated data, but every, every, every time he's given us data, it's shown the same things. It's showing the trends, and the trends have been proportionally higher and higher and higher from what he's shown. I expect that the trends that he would show in a future study would just show a continuation of those trends only in a higher amount. You know, I mean, you know, we'd have, we'd have to be blind at this point to not know that we've got a deer problem. We've also got to, we also have to be ignorant to not know that we can't do this alone, that, you know, if you have other cities around, deer don't say, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into Englewood Cliffs, I'm only going to go into Englewood. I mean, so the deer problem, unless we're going to shoot them or castrate them, which are things that have been, which are things that we know we're not going to do, we at least need to protect our citizens from. And, you know, I present, once again, like I did back three years ago, I beseech the council to be able to pass a resolution which would allow, we can have a wider level of discussion as to, you know, at which places and which, in which places and what are the criteria for that. But that, if, to allow for, you know, waivers for, you know, eight-foot backyard and halfway up the side yard fencing to protect people's backyards at least, so that their families and their children are protected. Obviously, we have a lot of people who are, you know, furious about the fact that the deer are eating up their front, their front yard foliage. You know, I mean, that's another issue that we definitely have to talk about. This particular suggestion would not solve that. We're not going to solve this all in a fell swoop. But like I said, you know, once again, I would want to, I would want to immediately, like I asked for a few years ago, to put up a resolution to move to eight-foot fencing in the rear and side yards, protect our families, to protect our children, because we know we have a deer problem. We know we have deer in our, deer in our backyards. We know there's a threat. And we have to do something about it substantially, not just keep talking about it. And this is a very simple answer to a very difficult issue and a very dangerous issue. I don't want this to happen when we finally find some kid ends up getting hurt. I want to do this proactively and immediately. We don't, I mean, this, this, this doesn't require paralysis of analysis. You know, fencing of eight feet protects against deer coming into backyards. Therefore, we should allow it to people who feel such endangerment. Thank you.
Councilman.
Yes, Mr. Hamer, yep.
Now, in addition to whatever local measures we take, I really do think, as Mr. Fedorko was saying, there, there have been studies and recommendations that, you know, were put together by the group that he's referring to and the group that Councilman Cohen participated in. But the underlying issue about all of the information they gathered was that this is a regional issue. It's frankly, it's a state issue. So, but whatever, whatever the county is doing, whatever we do should dovetail into whatever the county's doing. Because deer are migratory, and if, if, you know, we do something locally and I'm slightly against the, you know, having eight-ten-foot fences, you know, around the backyards of, you know, most of the residences. You know, anyway, I just think we need to, you know, work with the county to get a real solution, a permanent solution. And deer culling, I'm not a fan of that, you know. You know, there are all kinds of horror stories of what have, what has happened in other municipalities, you know, when people have done that and, you know, the, you know, the, I bet I'm also not in favor of deer being hit by, by trucks on Route 4 and, you know, in the streets by people in SUVs and cars or whatever trucks. But, you know, we need a solution and we need to work with, you know, the county and other municipalities to get to a solution that suits all of us. So.
Yep, I think there's more to come on this. The next. So what?
Can I say something, please?
Yes.
Thank you. What I just want to say is, you know, from all, from all the conversations I've had, from all the things that the group that we had had saw was that you had some of the northern, some of the northern townships in the county taking, you know, discussing or talking about all the kind of measures which Englewood would never allow. You know, I think realistically what we've seen year in and year out continually is that if you're, you know, if we're going to assume that we are going to in, 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 in an expedited timeframe, be able to get, you know, enough of the townships, because it's not just the town, like you said, you know, like deer don't know the difference in different towns in the county. They also don't know county lines. You know, this is a problem in the entire, as you said, in the entire state. So even if you get the county, you're still talking about deer coming in other ways. You know, the reality is at this point, there are no good answers that are acceptable to the residents of Englewood. You know, I mean, whether it's killing, culling, castrating, whatever the different things that we've talked about, 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 you know, that we've seen and heard from experts about deer population, none of these kinds of things are the kind of things which Englewood is going to be supportive of. And in the absence of an answer in that regard, and I don't think any answer in that regard is happening anytime soon. And we can talk about studies about deer, which, you know, yes, we can continually do, so we have the trends, we can prove our, what we need to prove. But like I said, we know they're here. We know they're affecting our traffic, our families and everything else. It doesn't take, you know, a rocket scientist to figure that out. What we need to do is make sure that families in our communities who understand right now that they believe that their children are in current jeopardy right now because deer are coming into their backyards and threatening their children, until we have another solution, we need to do something to protect and allow those families to protect their own. And, you know, to me, if you want to say that we're allowing this, you know, we're, you know, obviously, the devil's always in the details. You want to put a resolution, an ordinance together on the fencing to allow it only until certain benchmarks are met. At that point, they have to be taken down. If we ever figure this deer situation out, God bless. But, you know, I, you know, we've been talking in circles about this deer population, deer problem now for years. And we have, let's be frank, we've done nothing. So I think it's time that we demonstrate to the residents of Englewood that we're going to allow people to protect themselves until we can figure something out. It's not that we're going to put them in danger until we figure it out. We have to protect them until we figure something out. And quite frankly, I don't know where 10-foot fencing came up. I mean, I don't think anybody's ever mentioned 10-fencing in the history of this council. But eight-foot fencing is what the measure is that all the experts have told us. And we're not talking about doing it aesthetically, you know, in an ugly aesthetic way for a lot of people, their front yards, you know, to protect their foliage like they want to. We're not, we're not advocating for that. We're advocating for is through halfway through, where people normally put their backyard fences, they're covering their backyards, this is the side yards of their backyards to protect their backyards so that their kids can go safely and they can let their kids in the backyard without worrying about a fully mature deer coming in and being there in front of their children. We have an obligation to protect our communities and, you know, unless somebody's got a better way to protect kids in backyards right now against deer, which I'm wide open to, we need to do something. And I, this is what I can think of. I'm wide open to any other ideas. I'm not married to any specific idea. I'm just saying, you know, this is an idea which logically would work. If you've got a better one, I'm all ears and let's do it, but until a better one comes, I don't see why we can't allow families to protect their children at this point in their backyards.
Well, I'm glad we got a lot of energy on this topic about protecting people's families, so hopefully have that when we have other incidents in Englewood as well. But I will say this, that this has not been raised in 2020 until I put it on the agenda. So if it was that important, we should have been talking about this thing all year long. But with that being said, then we need to, no, let me, let me finish. I let everybody else talk. But with that being said, we can explore all the options, sit down with Jim Fedorko and whatever he comes up with as well, and talk to Franz as well, because I don't know, but I do recall that when this was brought up, when there was some pushback from the public about putting in eight-foot fences, I do recall that. So, you know, it's what the public also wants to have as well. So that, that should be a conversation that we should have jointly with everybody and then let Jim come up with some ideas as well, and we try to find an answer for it. But I will tell you, just putting a fence in your backyard and your side yards, the deer will walk. deer's gonna walk in the front, walk in the back, they'll come out the back. Right now, I mean, listen, I mean, they're all over, so I mean, they'll, give them a lot of credit, they're a lot smarter than we think they are, you listen, trust me. So I'm just thinking, there are, there's work to do, so whatever you could come up with, in collaboration with anybody else, let's put it on the table and see what we can do with it. Mr. Cohen?
I, I mean, with all due respect, the reason I didn't bring it up this year is because the past years that I brought it up, I was shot down, and I was told specifically that these things would not be supported. So, I, I, I mean, if, if I bring it up fourteen times, every time I'm told.
Listen, you know what? If, if you're passionate about it, you should have brought it up, that's what I said.
The record can be checked, I, I, I brought it up umpteen times, and every time I was shot down.
Let's check the record, you didn't bring it up in 2020. And all I'm saying is, it's not a matter, it's not a matter of arguing or anything. If you're passionate about it, you're, you're in a leadership position.
Okay, so.
You could, you could, you could act, you could do something.
Okay, so I'm act, so, so you know, I'm asking you again right now, can we ask, instead of punting again, can we ask Jim Fedorko right now about eight-foot fencing in the rear inside yards?
Jim, Jim Fedorko's not the zoning officer, that's a zoning issue, you gotta change it there.
Okay, so, so, so.
So that's, that's, that's what that is.
So we put an order together to make those changes?
Let him, let him, let him do what he said he was gonna come back to with us, and then we'll, we'll work on it, let, let's, let's have it there, that's what we can do.
Well, from my understanding of what Mr. Fedorko said is that he's gonna come back regarding studies, not regarding those specific solutions, so I'd like to be able to make sure that's part of the conversation.
Studies, the studies may show us something else.
The studies, the studies are gonna show, we all know them to show, which is the continuing trends that he has shown us in every year's study, that the deer population is rising. We know that. We don't, I don't, I don't, I don't need a study to tell me that the studies that each of the past fifteen, ten years have shown us the same exact thing, constant rising trends of deer. We wouldn't be having this conversation if we didn't all know already logically and intuitively that the deer population is rising. I mean, do we really need a study to tell us the deer population is rising? If we needed that, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Mr. Cohen, you said what you had to say, right? And, and you said that you brought it up 150 times, and you believe it's that? You didn't bring it up in 2020, whether it was gonna be shot down or whatever? So, listen, and we said that Fedorko would work on this, come back to us, we're not gonna solve it tonight, if you want, you can put it on the agenda 150 times and, and talk about it, but I think let Jim do what he's gonna do, and he'll come back with some information, but we have to get the counties to say, this is bigger than Anglerwood itself. Listen, I hear what you're saying, but it's bigger than Anglerwood, all we're saying is, here's the topic, anybody who wants to come back with some solutions, let's bring them to the next meeting, and that's fine.
But the thing is though, first of all. But a few things, one, I'm not, I'm not looking to wait for the county, because we've been waiting for the county for years, and, and there's no solution that they're going to come up with, which is going to be quick and helpful, it's just not gonna happen, we all know that. Second of all, you know, what Jim had said earlier, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for Jim, but what the conversation was around with Jim in this meeting was about him coming up with yet another study to show us the same things that we already know, I want action, not just another study to tell us that there's increasing deer and deer problems, we already know that to be the case. The third thing is, I wanna make sure that we have active, proactive solutions to protect families, because if we're not going to do that, if all we're gonna say is we're gonna wait for the county and wait for other states, wait, wait for the state and wait for everybody else, then, 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 then we're not really saying anything other than punting this issue. So you're saying.
Well, I, listen, I stand, I stand by, I stand by, I stand by what I said.
Okay, but the solution, a solution I'm coming with right now for discussion, is a fact that we know, and all the studies have shown, that deer cannot go over an eight-foot fence. That's why Flat Rock has put up those fences, that's why those fences are there at those heights. And if we can make sure that, that at least in people's backyards, until we figure something else out, that, that we know that, that deer cannot get into the backyards of our families and our residents, then that is at least something that we can have as an intermediate solution to make sure to protect families from the increasing deer population that are in people's backyards and threatening their children. I mean, if somebody has a better idea, you know, God bless, let them present it, and I'm all ears, but until that point, I'd like to make sure that we can do something pro- productively.
All right, next. Annual hiring of professionals. Bill, you wanna take a stab at that one, just talking about professionals and who we need to consider?
Yeah, you know, like most municipalities, the professional appointments come up every January, they're typically one-year terms. In the past couple of years, the city has done requests for proposals for, kinda staggered the positions. For example, last year and the year before, I think that bond counsel, city attorney, the auditor, the appraiser, public defender, I think the code enforcement prosecutor, so it's not mandatory, it's up to the governing body if they wish to do RFPs for all positions or just certain positions, and it's really up to the discretion of the governing body. Some municipalities don't do RFPs, some municipalities do RFPs for every single position every year, which is, you know, 25 positions probably, even though they don't have any intention of changing. Though, I think the more practical thing is you're doing where you think you might wanna make a change, or you're not familiar with a person or something along those lines. There's no right or wrong way, it's just an option as to how you wanna go in terms
So what is your recommendation in terms of timing on this? Should this be done in January?
Yes, and, and as Yancy alluded to, you need, if you are gonna do RFPs, you're gonna need at least 20 days. Well, the RFP has to be drafted, then it has to be published, and you really have to give any responders 20 days to respond, and then typically you go over to responses and evaluation. It, it's the same process we did with Labor Council last year.
Okay. So is it fair to say if anybody's got anything on their mind with that, they should bring it up, but we can talk about that in closed session?
Yeah, 'cause once you start getting into the details, you, you're getting into contracts and appointments, which are more appropriate in closed session, you don't take formal action in closed session, that ultimately has to be done in open session and the process is very public. But if you want evaluating people and things like that, that's typically done in closed session.
All right. Thank you. We talked about the parking meters, and the last one is a public information officer or consultant. And I ask to put this on here, because we've had a number of events that we should have the ability to communicate with the public fa- swift and accurate information, and a person that has that skillset would, would, would be in support and supporting the city manager as well as supporting our department heads who have to communicate to the public or with the public. And this person would be tasked with putting that together, just like the recent issue we had down at the police department, we, the police chief and interim city manager were able to get something out pretty swiftly, and we need, we, we need to consider having somebody here who will factually say what we need to say, not when somebody puts their spin on it. And I think it would be, it would be an added, a value-added source for, for the city as well as the city manager, as well as this council. Bill, did you, did you have somebody, did Levi wanna talk about that, or he can talk about that next time?
Um, yeah, um, I wasn't present, but Levi Cool from my office, I think it was last April. This was discussed and, I was with an individual that he had worked with in other municipalities and other parts of the state, that was a, an attorney by training and did dominant work, but also had, had started a company doing public work and press releases and like a public information officer too, so I can recirculate from Levi that information.
Is it your experience that many municipalities have it of our size and bigger?
Uh, largely, of this size and larger, yes, small towns, no, 'cause they generally don't need it.
Right. And a very active town like ours is, you know?
You often see it, yes.
Okay.
Is that would be, would that be something by an RFP? Where you would.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I think the gentleman that, he suggested, I don't know, it's dated, this was more than a year ago, Bill, correct?
Well, it was April of this year.
There was some, there was some controversy online involving that individual, but I, I, I get the notion, and rather than creating a paid position for something like this, you might be able to have somebody else who's already situated and has a seamless sense of the social media and the communications to kind of adopt this in their department, rather than creating another light item in salary. So it's something to consider, and also the school may wanna share their responsibility if it's getting information out with.
But this is.
No, I'm just saying, it's, if it's a consultant cutting down to the chase, maybe that's a way to defray the cost.
Yeah, but we need, we need, we need a professional, somebody who understands government, right? Somebody who understands Anglerwood, I mean, they, this, this has to be somebody who, when they say something there, you know, it, it hits, it hits home and it communicates and it really puts the message out to the community, so it's, they can take in to what they're getting here and understand.
But there are multiple, are multiple theaters to different parts of the community and the schools and the central business district, and all these parts need to be with one message, one group, and there are ways to defray the cost. We could actually, Mr. Cobb, get the hospital, which is the biggest employer that we have to, to weigh in and maybe weigh in financially, the schools and the city government, because there's a lot of interested stakeholders there, it's just something to consider.
Yeah. Okay. So now, so since we've covered items for discussion, now we're gonna go to public session. I'm gonna open up the, the meeting to the public, and I ask that you step up, or in this way, you raise your hand at the bottom of the screen, provide us with your name, your address, you have two minutes to speak, and remember, we always do it in a respectful way, so that we are able to have a, a respectful dialogue with each other, so we can come to some kind of resolutions or address these questions in a thoughtful way. Yancy, if you have anybody?
Hello, Diane Jansen, 589 Richland Terrace. This is quite a lively meeting, I have a lot to say, and I'm not gonna get it all in, so I'm just gonna touch on the points. There is nothing I'd love better than to see Anglerwood News and Anglerwood Today go out of business through a city public information officer or some kind, someone who has a handle on social media that can provide information, not just to who's a member, but through the city in an official capacity, that would be wonderful. And whether or not people would volunteer, I bet you could get a consultant in and people, I'm not saying I would do it, but there are people like me that would do it and assist, that's one. Two, deer. I, my representative does not represent the point of view that we are holding in my part of Ward Two. We have been able to effectively keep deer out of our backyard with six-foot fence and a four-foot fence, and we do that by augmenting it with green giant trees, which we are in the city of trees, and we also do prevent deer from eating our front foliage and shrubs by, we have planted things that deer are not attracted to, and we do not have a deer problem. I will tell you this, though, we did go around in the fall, looking at signs to see who, who was putting up signage for voting for whom, and we did notice there were no deer in Ward Two during our drive, there was one deer in Ward One, we noticed over two dozen deer in Ward Three. Now, if I could afford an eight-foot fence, I must have some kind of money. I don't wanna see certain people being able to fence out deer and push deer to other parts of the city. This is a regional and county issue, we could train people through the environmental commission and using Flat Rock on how they could change how they maintain their properties.
Okay, Ms. Jensen, sorry to cut you off, but you've done, you've done the two minutes already, thank you for your comments, appreciate it, got the gist of what you're saying, thank you so much.
City planner, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
But.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy? You're on mute. You're on mute.
I'm sorry. Peter Jansen.
Yes, Mr. Jensen, please.
Hey, good evening, Pete Jansen, 589 RT, Ward Two, that's Richland Terrace.
Yes, I got it.
Oh, script. Hey, we brought something up three years ago, it's the intersections of Overlook with Jones and Overlook with Kenwood, we have flooding, this is now three years, we're entering a winter, last night it iced up there pretty good. We had talked last year about doing some regrading, because the water with Jones and Overlook drains into the middle of the intersection, so it doesn't shed the water like it should to the outer portions of the roadway.
Okay.
Starting this year, Kenwood has a leak in the middle of the roadway going all the way down to Route Four, that is the very, one of the steepest hills in Anglerwood, and if that ice is up, we got big trouble.
Okay.
So I'm bringing these up to you guys, we're freezing now.
Mr. Volsi's on the line.
Volsi has pictures.
Okay.
Just, just so you know, we actually completed, just completed the, the, the plans for the Overlook to, to improve the drainage there, et cetera, and get rid of the water issue there. That's probably gonna go out to bid, probably in January, so we're looking to have that work done as soon as the, the weather breaks after the winter, to have a contractor come in and have that completed. Unfortunately, the winter, I'll be working with the DPW to ensure that, you know, that that area stays as, as safe as possible. But that's, that's what we're looking at right now. I don't know, if the winter is mild, then maybe we can, you know, we'll be able to start that work beforehand, but right now, it looks more like that this is probably gonna happen in early spring.
So, Mr. Volsi, can we take any measures that are, that we have to make sure that that road, wherever that leak is or whatever, that it's, it's secure, so we don't have people sliding over there or?
Absolutely.
You know, can we do that between you and Mr. Jenkins?
That is something that we're definitely gonna be keeping our eye on and trying to, trying to secure it as much as possible.
Please, yeah, 'cause it drops down pretty cold at night now, so if there's water there that freezes and people, you know, we don't wanna have any problems over there. Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, that issue with Kenwood's a brand-new issue.
Oh, okay. Okay. Mr. Volsi's got it.
Overlook is old.
Okay, thank you.
No one else has their hand raised.
Okay. So, you know, we're gonna do, Yancy, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the close, we're gonna close the public session, and we're gonna go to our closed session. Mr. Bailey, could you step us through this?
Yes, sir. Yep. Be resolved by the governing body of the city of Anglerwood that pursuant to Section Seven and Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, that meet in closed session to discuss matters pertaining to litigation, personnel appointments, and matters within the attorney-client privilege, and be a further resolved that the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public upon taking final action thereon, provided it does not constitute an undue invasion of privacy or violate the attorney-client privilege, and be a further resolved that the governing body will be returned to open session simply to adjourn the meeting, and it is not envisioned that it will be taking any formal action at that time.
Yancy, you sent everybody to closed session stuff on today, right?
The email I sent out today. Wanna contact Ruderman?
I, I did about fifteen minutes ago.
So he should be in there. Bill, you're gonna handle the closed session stuff we got?
And Mr. Ruderman.
Right.
On the labor and personnel issues.
Right, yeah. Okay.
So we're all leaving this meeting?
Just need a motion and second first.
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Catherine, second.
And then roll call, or all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're in closed session, we're gonna move to the next room, right?
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Franz. Thank you, thank you.
Please move on so that I can go ahead and, thank you. Please move on so that I can go ahead and, thank you.